Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Dartmouth School Committee for Monday, August 22, 2022, to water. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask if you have any cell phones, pagers, beepers, any electronics, if you put them on vibrate or shut them off completely. I would appreciate it. We would appreciate it. I'd also like to let you know that this meeting is being televised through the Dartmouth High School media YouTube channel and it's being, will be also be shown on future broadcasts during the week on Dartmouth Cable TV, Channels 9 and 18, at a number of different times, and we appreciate everything that they do. All right. Roll call, please, Ms. Gunther.
John Noons.
Yep.
Mary Waite.
Yes.
Kathleen Amaral.
Yes.
Shannon Jenkins.
Here.
Chris Oliver.
Here.
Gee, thanks. They couldn't hear me? Okay. Let me take the approval of the regular session minutes of July 25, 2022.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Dr. Jenkins, second by Ms. Waite on the motion. Any discussion? Chair hearing done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to move into public comment. We've allocated 10 minutes for that, and if anyone has any comments they'd like to offer on tonight's agenda items, and agenda items only, ask you to please step up, give us your name. You have three minutes. Please understand that we do not get into back-and-forth discussions. It's your comments. They're part of the record, but we do not get into any back-and-forth discussion or anything of that nature.
Sonia Ko. I'm talking on the topic of allergy awareness. On June 16, my son endured a medical emergency in the school. He encountered an anaphylactic reaction that occurred in his classroom. My son was diagnosed with eggs allergy and not allergies that are life-threatening. We remain vigilant, and everybody in the class knows about it, the nurse, the bus driver, you know, and that's something that we accepted the challenge to teach everyone, educate, and prepare my son for these events. But I was shocked that day. I got a call that 911 had arrived after the nurse administered his epinephrine. My conversation with my son and the nurse was very direct. They told me he had gotten ice cream, and it contained eggs. I don't really know how that happened because I didn't send him to school with ice cream. He doesn't buy school lunch. He doesn't buy school snacks. I later would find out that the third grade did something fun for the school and went out and bought ice cream and toppings for the last day of school celebrations, which I think is great. But had I known about it, I would have probably declined or been there to give him a safe option and make sure that he felt included. I have to be thankful for the nurses who immediately administered his epinephrine and for my son, who was very brave to know that he needed the nurse. But we have policies and protocols and guidelines in place for events like this. He 100% needs to avoid his allergen. Kids are different. Kids can present all different ways. Sometimes, school reactions happen, and you don't know what they had. But in this case, he was given his allergen. I just want to say, for allergy awareness, it means one thing to me than just a few signs. I think staff needs a little bit more training, not just on Professional Development Day, not just sign here, these are your kids with Epi, because although it's written down, we need to be able to act on them. My son clearly said his throat didn't feel right. He's nine. I think that's all he needs to say. He said he needed the nurse. He was sent to the nurse, but he walked alone, not with a staff member, not with a peer, and he immediately vomited at the nurse's door. And again, I'm so thankful that they moved in action and gave him his Epi once they, you know, could figure out that it was a reaction. The awareness part can't just be signs. We have to kind of do everything as a community, a district, friends, family, anywhere and everywhere you go, if we could educate on allergy awareness. Everyone's going to present differently, and I don't even support food bans and food restrictions because I don't think that's the real world. Certainly, in the elementary level, you need to put a few accommodations in place to keep those kids safe, but the real world, they're not going to care about his allergies. But if you were aware and you kind of had that mindset when you're at Shaw's or at the school, you kind of know you've got to wash your hands before and after, sanitizer doesn't kill food allergens, and teach your children that. Teach them. Everybody can be a pal and save a life. And I'm looking just for the awareness to be more of a big deal. We can't just say we hung up signs, we do a professional development education. You've got to act on these drills. I mean, nobody goes to a fire drill and doesn't bring the fire extinguisher. You've got to act on them. I think of the bus driver. I know that they're trained. That's what I'm told. But to process it, they need to pull the bus over, give the epinephrine, call 911, keep those other kids calm, safe, give epinephrine again in five minutes if 911 hasn't arrived. It's a lot to do. So I ask, have we put this into play? Have we done drills? But whatever we can do, whatever I can do to help educate and talk about it more, it shouldn't be something that's just on the first day of school. The more people that are aware, the more kids will be safe. And I love Dartmouth. I love the school. It's my school, my kids, and I just want to be part of the team to spread awareness. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Hello, Lynn Turner here. I'm commenting on, I think, two items on the agenda. The first is the cellphone adjustments to our handbook, and they're going to be restricting the cell phones during school time and having them in a hotel, is my understanding, per our new principle, which I wanted to say after reading his reasoning for doing so and compromising with having them in the rooms with the kids, but still having them available for safety reasons. I think it was a good compromise that he's making. I think that he has good reasoning for the benefit of the children's mental health, that they are not just glued to their phones all day and that they're able to interact more with their peers. So I just want to give my support for his thoughts on the cellphone policy changes. And the second thing I would like to comment on is about the History Committee for celebrating our culture and our history in Dartmouth. I think it's a wonderful thing, and I would hope, I would be interested even in being involved in that kind of a committee to help bring awareness and celebrate our great culture and help all residents feel proud of living here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Mike Ludzik. I have been in touch with Rick Porter over at Potter Elementary. I also spoke with the Dartmouth Police Department, also at the superintendent's office. I believe her name's Kate. Awesome. It's you. Nice to meet you, finally. She's great. So myself, as well as many other parents that I know, have a concern about the reality that bad things can happen at these schools due to some crazy people. And especially after the Uvalde incident, the concern is heightened even more. So after the conversations that I've had with the individuals that I just mentioned, I am very aware and impressed with the security measures these schools have taken since Sandy Hook. And I also, I am also aware of what needs to be in place, for the most part, after speaking with the police department about getting school resource officers at the elementary schools. I know that the middle school has one. I know that the high school has one, which is awesome. I can't speak for all parents, but at least the ones that I know share my concern very passionately. So we are hopeful that some steps will be taken to get school resource officers also at the elementary schools. I know, for myself, I'm very interested in being as proactive as possible and working with whomever necessary to get these kinds of things put in place, not just for my children, but also for the generations to follow, so this isn't something that we have to revisit again, and we could just have ongoing security and a sense of safety on top of the security measures, again, that have already been taken to make this pretty much a foolproof system. So thank you all. Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. Old business. Update on school security and allergy awareness. Dr. Gifford?
Yes, we did.
We did.
Yeah.
That's all right.
No, no, we bounced.
I took my nap when he did the minutes.
There you go. That's it.
Okay. All right. So I appreciate the comments from the audience tonight because we are talking about those issues. So during our admin retreat, I guess, last week, August 4, actually, two weeks ago, these issues were on our agenda, and we spoke about them a lot. And some of the things, I'll talk about the allergy awareness, first of all. As I let you know the last time we met, there are a lot of things in place already, and I did send you the policies that are in place, so just so you could review them. Some of, not to say that we can't do more and would be open to ideas, which Ms. Paveo and I have been talking about, what other things we can add to the year for PD, et cetera. But one of the things that we want to stress is that the things that are in place are listed in the policy, and unfortunately, probably people have become lax over time. It hasn't been, as the speaker spoke about, really brought to the attention. So that's one of our principal intents, opening up school, is we've worked with the leadership team to make sure that everyone is made re-aware, if you will, goes over the policy that's in place, such things as if a party or something, which we so often frowned upon with food, et cetera, we're not advocating that all parties have to involve food, of course, that the principal and the nurses are made aware, so these kinds of things wouldn't happen. Unfortunately, at this particular incident, there was, there was a safe option provided for the child. Unfortunately, the child then went to a place where there wasn't a safe op, it was an additional, so unfortunate should not have happened. So we are reemphasizing our policies that we have in place, such as, once again, as I said, letting the principal know, the administration to know what's happening. The nurses do meet with the teachers, and we, from the beginning of the year, to talk about the students that are in their class that have any kind of allergies. They do the EpiPen training, et cetera. And also, the one thing that we wanted to mention was about, we have had a practice in place, I'm not going to say it's in every school at all, but that there have been no food from home allowed that come in. So we would, we want to talk about that a little bit more as a district. So that's just, and we are providing signage as an initial step, as an additional step that we haven't done in the past. So that's a little bit update on that.
So, Dr. Gifford, so before we go into the security, since these are almost two separate topics.
Yep.
So I guess one of my questions, again, listening to Ms. Cohen and experiencing this, is, you know, and as we talk about training, you know, I know some students have a 504 who have allergy. You know, it seems to me important that you have team meetings that can, to, you know, what we have with, you know, an IEP, that those folks can meet, including the bus drivers and the custodial staff. I think, well, I say custodial staff, but I'm also thinking cafeteria staff as well, because those students are usually sitting in a seat, and, you know, while we do have students who have peanuts, I think it's, you know, we also have students who have a wide variety of allergies, and if you're sitting next, you know, we, you know, they do serve things that, you know, broccoli and other things, and they may come to sit next to that child. So it'd be good for those folks, you know, to all know for their own, like, peace of mind as well. And I do think, you know, EpiPen training is, I mean, I've had to give them EpiPen numerous times. It's unnerving, you know, and I think that Ms. Cohen did a really, you know, talking about the bus and stopping. So, you know, they do give you, you know, dummy EpiPens that you can use as testers to try that out. So I think that would be really, you know, having the team so they can hear from the parent, so they understand. Also, you know, again, as Ms. Cohen mentioned, not all allergens, you know, and reactions present, you know, you can have the vomiting, you can have the hives.
Right.
You know, and again, there were mistakes made here, of course, but I think, you know, having that meeting and just creating that conversation, you have some people who are more comfortable as parents to start those conversations than others. So that would be like, again, from a parent's, you know, some suggestions, you know, from my experience.
Yeah, we always do, obviously encourage parents that have those concerns to meet with their team, their nurse, et cetera, et cetera. And they do have medical plans, you know, we do put those alerts.
No, I know that. I know that.
In our Aspen account. So a lot of things are in place. Again, not to say that more couldn't be done.
Okay.
So we're still working on that, and we'll take those suggestions.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I have another allergen issue. I would just also add playground staff to the list of staff to be trained, because other people access playgrounds and off-hours. And so we need to make sure there may be nuts or something on the playground that a student can be contaminated with. I know I have a friend whose son is severely out allergic to peanut butter. There's all sorts of allergies, but she decided not to send her kids to the school because she was not sort of satisfied with the recess protocols. So I think we need to make sure we include that as well, because we don't control access at all hours to those parts of the facilities. So I'd just like to make sure that we add that staff. And we also think about, like, if someone's having a reaction out on the playground, how are they escorted? Do we have enough staff? Because I do think we cannot have kids just being sent to the nurse's office unescorted. And so just thinking about those, the playground protocols as well, I think is really important.
Mr. Oliver?
Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'm not going to sugarcoat anything here. Obviously, I love this district. I love the Dartmouth Public Schools. I think our educators and our staff and faculty do a tremendous job, but it's clear to me that mistakes were made on this day. And we need to, we need to look at our policies. We need to look at our procedures. We need to look at retraining, and we need to speak to the individuals of the students or the parents of the students that these things affect. I see two, two concerns here. I see prevention. How do we make our staff and faculty aware of the policies and procedures that are in place, and what can we do to improve upon them? Because we can have all the policies and procedures in the world, but if they're not being followed, then there's no point in having them in the first place.
Right. That's so important.
So I think we need to really take a look at this. I, a couple of things in addition. One being, I think we need to consider, I've had several conversations with Ms. Ko. She's more than willing to be part of the solution with this. I think it's worthwhile, and we just heard from my colleague, Dr. Jenkins, about another parent that had concerns. Are we looking at the big picture here? Are we looking at not just only classroom staff? Are we looking at our teaching assistants? Are we looking at recess? Are we looking the recess monitors? Are we looking at our bus drivers? So just training them on, not just around being nut-free classrooms or peanut-free classrooms, but being allergy, truly being allergy aware. I can speak from someone that has experienced anaphylactic reaction, and it's nothing, it's one thing to have an allergy, but it's a whole different thing to have to either administer an EpiPen or give yourself an EpiPen. I don't wish that upon anyone. So I would ask that this committee and this administration do our due diligence to make sure that we include the stakeholders in this community, faculty, staff, parents, medical personnel. And let's revisit this, because this one incident is too many, in my opinion. The second piece of this is the EpiPen administration. I agree, we need to be following up and making sure that for those students that need, that have an EpiPen assigned to them, that we're doing our due diligence with training of those staff that are around them, and they're aware of everything around that. And I know a lot of this is already in place. Most of it is already in place. So all I'm asking is that we revisit the policies and procedures, and we look to see how we can improve upon them, so this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
I just quickly would add, I might go without saying, but I don't want to leave it unsaid, is that we rely heavily over the last, you know, forever, but mostly the last couple of years, on substitutes, and just, I don't know how that impacts the, you know, their access to that information, you know, on the fly, if they're notified in the morning that they'll be, you know, filling in for a class. I think it's quite important to keep them in the loop and understanding that that's so important.
Yeah, good point. Yeah. And I'll, just, and I think field trips, you know, again, as we're thinking, I mean, that is a whole issue if you have the teacher who's carrying the EpiPen, you know, depending on the age of the student, some EpiPens are on the student. In other cases, the teacher, if the teacher ends up not being with that student in the group in a different part of the building, that becomes problematic, too. So just, again, the whole, you know, to the whole picture, because, you know, luckily, this little guy was quite a self-advocate and got himself down there. So, you know, really, you know, kudos, you know, I don't know if this one is still there, but, you know, certainly him.
Mr. Nance, can I just add one more thing?
Yeah.
I do really want to amplify what Mr. Oliver said here. We need to take this seriously. We're about to have a discussion about school safety, and more kids go to emergency rooms and die every year from allergies than are, you know, have, than die from school shootings. They're both horrible. One, we should be taking this as seriously as we are taking our school's security and devoting as much resources to it. And I know we're, we are serious, but if it means that we have to spend money to do training or whatever, we should be investing those resources because it's just as important.
Agreed.
Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, safety and security, a lot of things are happening there. So, as you know, I've said this over and over again, and Mr. Galishaw keeps reminding me that we've done, continue to do work with the police department on camera access and PA access, et cetera. I know they've been working over the summer with the police department as well. So it just, it just connects us and makes that partnership available. One thing that we determined, we're going to do also, before I get into that, we did update the CEMP, and we've produced a new copy of that. So all of the staff during opening day, well, opening, next couple of days, will get that new emergency management plan, and the principals have been asked to go over that, the highlights of that, the shifts, not many changes, but just to make sure, once again, people know, plus we have a lot of new staff that know that that's in existence, and to be able to review that and use that. We've also determined this year, we've asked the principals, once again, to go back. We want documentation of all of the drills, whatever it might be, and trainings that they are doing in their building. Because as you know, we've always asked them to do the Alice training, whether we use the video with the staff, and then we have had in the past, say, pre-COVID, the evacuation drills with students. The elementary, we did it a little bit differently with the reading of the book, explaining to them a stranger danger, where to go, those kinds of things. We're going to ramp that up with the elementary schools this year. We're running actual drills. They will be exiting the building. They will be sheltering in place, because back in the past, I think folks were saying, let's not scare them, et cetera. Well, it's time to, we need to move on beyond that, because life happens, and it's not so good sometimes. So with that said, we're asking our principals to make a template documentation of every drill, every professional development, including opening day, when they go over the CEMP, et cetera, of what it is, so we know that we have done our due diligence, whether it's drills or trainings or whatever it might be. I've been in contact with the chief. I've been in contact with Officer Pimento, who has done our Alice training in the past. He's actually, will be working here tomorrow with our new teaching staff at Project Time. They'll do 9 to 11. They have their Alice training. And of course, we'll continue that in the, in the schools, but this is just for the new people tomorrow. He's also meeting with, I've asked him to come on Friday to meet with the leadership team, to talk, to hear from them how the presence of the police department during drills helped in the past, what do we think we need going forward, how we might set that up, et cetera. So he'll be here with the leadership team on Friday. Also, just so you know, the police department was training at Potter School with the fire department last, last week, I guess. And also, to this gentleman's point, I have spoken with the chief, and they did post for one additional SRO, which will be rotating around the elementary schools for the year. So they determined to do that. That's, so we will have three SROs in the district. I did ask him that once that person is chosen, that we are, meet with them, all of the SROs actually, to determine expectations, because it's new for the elementary especially. But also, just, we meet anyway, at least once a year, and talk about the SRO, so be able to meet them, talk about that. And so that's kind of exciting news. So that's kind of it on updates to safety and security, but just to know that, you know, the intent will be to bring back all of those really significant trainings and that kind of thing. So.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So first of all, thank you, Dr. Gifford, for the safety and security update. I'd like to think, publicly thank and acknowledge the Dartmouth Police Department for their work with the school department.
Yep.
I had the opportunity to read the article, and I know there was, from different, speaking with different people in town. So I'm really, I'm really pleased and impressed with the level of training that this town, in collaboration with the school district and the police department together, working collaboratively, the trainings that take place, as well as all the interoperability that goes on with our police departments and communications. I think Dartmouth is certainly, if not on par, if not ahead of the curve with a lot of this. So I'm really pleased. I'm also really pleased to hear that we're going to have another SRO in rotation at the elementary schools. That's something that I've been, I've been asking for, and I'm glad to see that it's finally, we're finally able to budget for it and make that happen. I'd love to see at some point, it doesn't need to be during the new staff orientation, the new staff intros, but it'd be great to just have the, all of our three SROs introduce themselves at some point, just so the public can see them, you know, parents that are watching, and just to be aware that, you know, these are the faces that, you know, that are in our schools and.
It's a good idea.
Just a thought. So just a couple of updates, or a couple of other thoughts around the upgrades that Mr. Galishaw was making, and I don't want to put him on the spot, but are they in regards to Carrie's Law and the Ray Baum Act? spot, but I, are they in regards to Carrie's Law and the Ray Baum Act around E nine-one-one telecommunications and all that? Okay. Yes?
Yeah. I put him on it. I said, I don't know what this means, take care of it.
Okay.
He just said he's knee-deep into it.
Okay. Great. I, I know that was something that was passed during COVID.
Yeah.
Um, and the FCC is finally, you know, trying to get around, making sure that districts are updated. So, I'm happy to see that that's taking place as well. My, my only other thing I would ask is, um, I, I have been, a few people have reached out to me in regards to, um, the situation at Potter School. So, I, I, I know I've had a conversation with Mr. Kylie, and, and I know that we're looking into, um, other steps to, to mitigate any issues in the future. However, you know, I just want to make sure that, that we continue that. I'm aware, I know my colleagues are, are aware of, for everyone watching at home, of things, and we're, we're, we hear you, we're following up with, with your concerns, and we're making sure that they're, they're taken care of at the building levels.
Well, to that point, as you know, just to clarify, a parent did reach out to principal, and then they reached out to us, and Mr. Kylie met with police. Also, the Board of Health was involved in that particular situation in the back there, and it's been resolved, so, at least for now. Yeah, at the moment.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I know that we're going to be speaking probably to this a bit when we get down to the cellphone issue, because, and I, I know it's part of this, and, and again, I fully support that. I think it's a great, you know, a great stride, and, and beating a lot of our issues, you know, which I'm sure we'll talk at more, but, and one of those issues includes the bathrooms, you know, at the high school, and that is a continuous. I'm, I'm hoping to hear, you know, if that is one solution, if there are other solutions or ways that we're trying to deal with that and mitigate the bathroom issue, because I just feel like we don't have enough coverage and, you know, with security, because you can only have, you know, you have to have someone at the desk, and then that other person, you know, can only go into those gender bathrooms that, so, you know, it's a challenge for those folks. And I know that, um, you know, Mr. Tebow, at one point, we were talking about that E-hall pass, and, you know, I'm curious to see if that's still something that, you know, is being, you know, thought about for this year, as, you know, again, we know that Vogue has had some success with that. And just, again, just trying to, because I feel like, you know, we know the bathrooms are just a continual issue, and for, you know, some kids don't want to use them, because they just don't feel comfortable, and, you know, so, so again, hopefully the cellphone piece will at least, like, start to address that, but it is something that, you know, thanks.
We'll be getting there in a few minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Anything else? Okay. Good. Mr. Kylie, update on maintenance and custodial summer projects.
Thank you, Mr. Noon. So, um, you know, I've said this before, but it's been a very busy summer. We have eight days left, um, before kids arrive, so we're going to need every minute of, of those eight days to get done what we, what we hope to accomplish. I, I really just, um, you know, we've taken on a lot this summer. We've had a lot of staffing issues, um, this summer, and I just really wanted to make sure that, uh, I thank John Burnett and his maintenance staff for their hard work. They've been working nights and weekends, and really trying to do their best to, to get ready. The custodians also have been working weekends, trying to work around our, all our activities, our academic and, and other activities and all our projects. So, it's, it's been a challenging summer, to say the least, and obviously, the heat that we had was a, was a factor as well, but, um, we'll be ready. So, in eight days, we'll definitely be ready.
Very good. Any questions?
Thank you.
Good job, Tom.
Yeah, thank you.
We thank them very much for all their, their effort, as you said, especially with the heat.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah. Thank you.
One quick, one quick question that I have, uh, and I happened to notice it on the school website today, was school lunch forms, that type of deal, the free, now, do you want, does, is everybody filling that out because of what we're getting from the Commonwealth and the federal government now?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Noon. So, um, i- it's important that people fill out the forms. Now, this year, we're fortunate that we, the state has, uh, you know, the legislature has voted to provide free and reduced, uh, lunch, uh, free, free lunch, so all kids. But, we're not sure, A, how long that's going to last, whether it's going to be any, any time beyond this year. And our federal funding is, is often contingent on free and reduced lunch statistics. So, even though everybody's getting free lunch, we still need to have statistics. And, uh, some of those are determined by the state outside of our application process. So, folks who are receiving other benefits, and their families are receiving other benefits, will automatically qualify for free and reduced lunch. But there's a lot of people who fall through the cracks in that system. And if they're not filling out those forms, we're not getting credit, and other communities will get funds that really should have been for, for our kids. So, yes, we'd encourage that, that as many people as possible, if you think that you might qualify, please, please fill out the forms.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All righty. Next, discussion on the formation of a working group regarding the Dartmouth history.
That's you.
That's me. All right. Well, uh, last week, uh, Dr. Gifford, uh, Dave Tattelbaum, who's the Chairman of the Dartmouth Board of Selectmen, and Ms. Waite, uh, the four of us met at the superintendent's office to, uh, you know, take a look at, trying to put together some type of, uh, you know, working group to, uh, start getting into the history and culture, uh, and such. We kind of came up with this, you know, probably having like a, a working committee type of deal, and, uh, Mr. Tattelbaum, you know, went back to, uh, Mr. McGinnis, who's the town administrator, and kind of appears as though that, in the long run, what this is going to actually have to be is a regular committee, subject to open meeting laws and all those, uh, wonderful things that we have to happen. The thing being is that, uh, they're going to be, you know, it, and again, it's going to be, uh, boy, at the mo-, at the moment, and Mary, please, if I'm misquoting, jump. I'm not, you know, uh, looking at probably seven members, uh, one member each from the Select Board, School Committee, and Historical Commission, uh, one member from the school department, one person from the town administrator's office, and additionally, possibly, uh, two committing, two community-at-large members to be appointed, uh, for one-year terms. Per the town chatter, at-large members, uh, need to be citizens of the community. And, you know, we talked about them possibly being, uh, uh, members of the tribe and, and such. So, in the discussion I had with, uh, that we had, I should say, I apologize, we had, they're looking, and the Select Board is going to, uh, carry the, do the heavy lifting on this, as, as he said. They're, they're going to meet, uh, after Labor Day to, to form this working group and get it going, uh, try and come up with a mission statement. And again, uh, you know, you know, the, the need to be residents of the town, if they're tribal members and they're not, you're kind of going to be ex officio, and, you know, not having any quote-unquote voting rights or things of this nature, but giving them the opportunity to be involved. So, that's where, uh, this is going at this point. Am I, did I miss, Mary?
No, I, I think that's, you know, we, and we...
I know you sent some stuff, and it was excellent.
No, yeah, I mean, I, I think at this point, you know, we, we were talking about the charges, you know, and certainly, you know, the big thrust of this is that we want to make sure that, you know, um, we're going right by this, you know, this logo that we have, and by this name, and that we're educating folks in Dartmouth, you know, as along with our students. And, you know, certainly, I think, when it comes to the curriculum, the, the schools are doing that. So, it's a lot of, it's what we are, you know, thinking, you know, more broadly in our physical buildings, we're already talking about signage that's happening in the schools, and then, you know, some, and, and again, and, and Mr. Tattelbaum, I think, correctly saw this as a, very much of a town issue. I mean, I think the town, like, kind of took this on as a nation in a lot of ways, um, in the recent past. And so, as part of that, you know, they want to work collaboratively with the towns that create some displays, you know, possibly even like working between the schools and having the libraries and all sorts of things. So, this is like the starting and the launch point. I think there's also an understanding that, you know, we travel, our school travels, our students travel, our graduates travel, so we want to make sure that, you know, we're, we're clearly representing ourselves and, you know, with honor to, to the symbol and everything. So, again, this is just a starting point. I think we still have to look at, you know, what that charge would be, and, you know, I don't want to, you know, and there was, you know, I had offered myself up to be on this committee, so, you know, again, I would have to get approval from my colleagues and everything else, but I'm, I'm happy to, I've been doing a lot of work around this, just on my own, so, um, so, that's about, you know, unless there's anything, you can either be with Dr. Gifford.
No, but...
I just think, um, Mr. Tattelbaum is presenting this to the Select Board tonight as well, and so our thinking was to just call a meeting of, like we said, we started thinking about someone from the Historical Commission, Ms. Waite, if that would be agreeable, because she's so into this history and, and doing a great job at, already. Mr. Tattelbaum, um, I was going to put one of our directors on, and just to start it, and then that group would evolve into a formal committee with, you know, open meeting law, et cetera, et cetera. So, but just to kind of get the conversation started.
Get it going.
Yeah. Have to start somewhere.
Yeah. Yeah. That, that, you know, roam, you have to crawl before you can walk. Dr. Jenkins?
So, this all sounds fine to me, and I think my position on the use of the logo is well-known. I also well-known that I lost that, that debate, so that's fine, I'm not going to relitigate that. But one of the issues that came up in that conversation was, we in the schools have policies about the use of the logo, about treating it respectfully and how we do that. And one thing I definitely don't want to lose sight of, because this is something we don't control, but maybe a town-wide group does. There are other organizations that use the logo that are not governed by the same policies. Um, and so, I really do want to make sure, as we think about, this is what we decided as a committee, not my decision, the committee decision, that, that that's what we stand for. We need to make sure that everyone in the community stands for those same things. And so, I'd like to see, I don't know if that can be worked into the charge of this group, but I would like to see that we ensure that anyone who's using the logo in this community is using it in the same way that we in the schools have determined are appropriate ways, because I think there are rules, not on the floor, you know, not doing...
Yeah.
I'd like to make sure that we sort of extend those policies and uses to those other organizations, that we as a schools don't have control over, but the towns do, I think, in part, because of leasing space or using, you know, town facilities. I, I want to make sure that we don't lose sight of that, because I think it's an important, you know, sort of thing to carry through.
Thank you, Mary.
And, and just, I'll just respond to that. I think that is a major thrust, and I have to give it, you know, appreciate, um, Mr. Tattelbaum for really, like, starting this, you know, coming to us and starting this conversation, acknowledging where we were in the spring. But I think, you know, he very much believes and agrees with that, I think, you know, philosophically, and wants to make sure that we're fully educating folks, and that's, you know, and if we don't, I mean, really hypocrites is, is the way he framed it, because we really need to make sure that if we're doing this, we're doing it right, and that is educating about the honor and everything. And, and again, so, those specific points, you know, we, but I, but those are well-taken, and I, you know, again, it's good to keep going, kind of like, going back over this and, you know, connecting and, and thinking about all the nuances, but I think the education piece is very much about educating the whole community, and that's why, you know, for the Select Board to also, you know, be kind of taking the charge on this is really helpful.
I guess I would just follow up and say that it leads me to the title of the working group, right? Because this is, it's not just about history, right? It's also about the policies around it, right? So, I, it's fine with me, I'm not going to say, let's change the name, but I just want to point out that, that there are some things that are going to fall under the scope of this committee that I think are a little bit broader than history. So, we might want to think about whether that's the appropriate name for that committee or not, um, but even if we call it that, I want to make sure that the scope is broad enough so that those sorts of things can be included in their work.
And, and they are talking about, uh, you know, getting, you know, reporting to us on a quarterly basis, both us and the Select Board, on a quarterly basis, so, you know, we've got that. Kathleen?
At this point, you, you mentioned, um, Mr. Tattelbaum is bringing it to his committee tonight.
Tonight, yeah.
Um, is it appropriate, then, for us? I mean, I'm agreeable with all the work that Mary's done and her website...
Yeah, no, I...
To sort of vote...
Sure.
Her, myself, make a motion that we vote Mary Waite onto that committee, if it's appropriate tonight.
That's fine.
So, I will make that motion that we...
One second. Second, so, moved by Ms. Amaral, second by Mr. Oliver, to appoint Mary Waite to, uh, that committee. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing, and all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
You know I'm actually really excited.
No, I know, you are excited, yes.
You know, and, and also...
And thank you for doing that, seriously.
Yeah, a lot of work.
And also, Mr. Tattelbaum did come to us with, he had the full support of his, like, so he actually came to that, like, not saying, like, I have the, you know, full support of the Select Board to do on this, so he's, he's going back with their support.
Right.
Yeah, he's good.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Are we good? All right. All right. New business. You want, you want me to...
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Uh, so, tonight we have our athletic director, Mr. Chris Affoli, who is going to talk about the Athletic Handbook that, um, we would want to vote from the school committee as a handbook. We haven't, I don't know how long it's been since, so, he'll tell us about that, but we felt it was, especially since this conversation was, and, and also, just, just boundaries, parameters, et cetera, et cetera, with athletes, et cetera, et cetera. So, Mr. Chris Affoli?
Thank you, thank you for the opportunity. Before I begin, I'd like to echo what Mr. Kylie said about our, our maintenance staff and everything that they've done for us in athletics. It has truly been amazing, the work that they've been able to complete over the summertime, again, during, um, a lot of this heat. So, you have John Burnett, and you have Shane Swansea, who is our new, um, maintenance individual who works with athletics, who has done a, a phenomenal job of working not only, um, you know, in our fields, at Quinn Elementary, in the middle school, and obviously the high school, and overseeing the stadium, and he's done a fantastic job, and we're looking forward to seeing, you know, what's next as we progress through the fall. So, uh, this is certainly, my, my portion tonight is certainly not as exciting as the cell hotels, but I can, I can assure you that it's just as important. So, um, I'm going to talk about Athletic Handbook revision, and, um, to Dr. Gifford's point, I don't believe the student athlete, or student handbook, I should, I should say, the Athletic Handbook has been approved and voted on by school committee ever, to the best of my knowledge. And, uh, for many of the workshops that I've attended over my, um, going into eleven years, um, you know, everyone that does present about, about handbooks and the importance of establishing a handbook, um, does also comment the importance of making sure that, um, it is approved and supported by the school committee, so hence the reason why I'm here today. So, when I was hired in the fall of 2019, um, over a course of the first two months, I was able to meet with all of our head coaches individually, and, and obviously talked about numerous topics. And one of the topics that kept coming up in all of these conversations was our Athletic Handbook being outdated. Revisions needed to be made, and they all wanted to be part of the process, which I think is a fantastic thing when you're trying to build collaboration and ownership with, you know, anything that you're trying to incorporate. So, hitting about the importance of handbooks, and again, hearing their feedback and the importance of wanting to be involved, went through this exercise of, you know, the importance of the handbook, and we discussed this with some of our coaches, it protects us legally, it states our philosophy and standards, our department's guiding principles, it defines success, it's the department's framework, consistency and accountability, and our school and state rules, along with drives our decision-making, our common language amongst all of the drives our decision-making, our common language amongst all of the stakeholders. It builds trust. It provides clarity and support. And it's proactive rather than being reactive. And, and one of the things that I pride ourselves in athletic department is trying to stay a few steps ahead and be proactive instead of reacting to things. So how did we start with this process? So this was the 2019-20 school year. This was right before COVID began. It seems like about 100 years ago. But we did start this process, and I'd called it phase one. It was a comprehensive review exercise of what we had at that point. Some stakeholders that were involved were our coaches. Involved parents, student athletes, and Mr. Tebow was our principal at the time. Mr. Tebow was involved in this exercise. So the questions were, what has worked, what has not, where were the holes, and what are our standards and expectations within athletics and the individuals that are participating in our program? Now, during this same time, I was, I had the opportunity to present at the Athletic Directors, the National Conference for Athletic Directors. And of course, the topic that I presented and did research on was a comprehensive handbook. So throughout that process, brainstormed everything that should be in a handbook for athletics. And again, I'm not going to bore you, bore you with each one of these details, but it's, it's a pretty extensive list. And the goal was to take where we had our holes, or what didn't work, fix it, and make sure that we covered as many of these topics as we could because there were so many missing in our existing handbook. It goes from philosophy all the way down to stopping and eating, which I know is a very fun and popular thing with some of our teams. But there needed to be some guidelines over that. All right. So again, took all that information for the last year and a half to two years, rewrote it, and took what we had, added to it, took some things out, put some new things in, made sure that we were aligned with everything that should be in a comprehensive athletic handbook. And the final product is, is what you folks have been forwarded. So moving forward, which I'd like to say it's phase two, is one of my goals this year is to create an Athletic Advisory Council, which will be, all stakeholders will be involved from, you know, coaches, staff members, administration, student athletes, parents, parents, guardians, and community members. Now, asking how many of each would be included, I haven't gotten that far yet, but it certainly will involve all stakeholders. What I visualize this to be is a fluid document. It's a, is living and breathing. So again, there's so many things that change quickly, whether it's a policy, a procedure, a new state law that's put in place, maybe something that wasn't working that we're tweaking to make better. Maybe there was some language that, you know, some individual stakeholders got kind of hung up with that needed to be cleaned up. So we're going to look to revisit annually with that group, beginning that process in April, and hopefully being able to share this with you folks consistently during your June meetings for any changes that we might make to it. And again, we're always open for suggestions, feedback, and most importantly, constructive criticism. Now, you would think that some common sense points that you, you would think are not, it shouldn't be issues, they're pretty obvious. I'll give you an example. I had a parent this past year ask me if there could be alcoholic beverages served during a, a team banquet, an awards banquet that they had. And again, common sense is no. But nowhere was that written. We also have had, you know, issues with vacations and what the parameters around vacations when our seasons are going on. I'll give a case in point. We do have a couple of kids that are on vacation still with the fall season just beginning Friday for football, and everything else started today. That wasn't documented in our handbook. So that has been added. And those are just two really small examples of a bigger picture of what we've been able to do. Again, this was something that I was hoping to have in place last year. But again, with, with COVID, it did take a backseat, and it was on the back burner. And now hopefully we continue to move forward. So with that, thank you, and I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Ms. Wade?
No, I just want to say like tremendous amount of work here. It's fantastic. And I can certainly see how it's updated and, you know, and I know, because again, we're going to circle back to this. But I like the fact that, you know, there was a distinction between hazing, which can certainly take place across social media as well as social media, because social media is used in so many dangerous and hurtful ways. I mean, to the point that you crop out, you know, one of the biggest things with, I'm hearing now is cropping out one person from a, from a group picture and things like that. And so understanding that, you know, the whole range of, and speaking to it in the handbook, I think really is timely and important. So among the many other things, this is something that I was really glad to see. So thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Jenkins?
So this is great. I, I would just have one, I'd have a request for next year. It's super easy for us to see adjustments when you submit a document as a markup. I'm sure you didn't do it this year because it changed so much. But as you move forward with revisions to this, that we've started doing that, and it's really, I think, helpful to us as a committee, that you can see exactly what changed. The only thing that I will add, speaking from personal experience as a, as an athlete and a child of divorce, that I hope that we as an athletic, you know, team are, are lenient about vacations. My, my stepfather taught in our local high school, and the only time I've ever seen him intervene with my brother was when he got in trouble for missing a practice, or some practices. But he had to miss them because it was a scheduled custody visit. So I know there's some rules here about being present on the first day, but sometimes those things are out of control for our kids. So I just want to make sure that we're understanding about those sorts of things.
To, to your point, and, and again, you know, we've had, I mean, there's, there's other issues that do come up, especially at the beginning of the season of a student athlete, and, and parents not registering a student athlete on time and having to wait after the first practice for us to reopen the portal. And again, they're able to start day two and get that tryout for that team. So it's certainly not held against them. And again, as a parent myself of, you know, a, a college student and a, and a middle school student, I know how much, you know, I know the challenges that presents with the family piece of it. And, and, you know, knowing when, when you can take vacations sometimes doesn't align with our school vacations. But, you know, it's one of those points that from the athletic standpoint, it's the importance of committing to that team, being part of that team, and making sure that you are a consistent contributor. But we, we have had situations where student athletes have gone away for a longer weekend or vacation. And, you know, if, if that's communicated well in advance, things can be put in place to make that work. Now, having said that, if that individual is, is away and somebody takes their place and does very well, you know, on the way, on the way back, there could or could not be a penalty. We leave it very gray with that. But they do have to compete to get, you know, that playing time and spot back.
Totally understand. I'm okay with that.
Yep. So.
Mr. Oliver?
I'll just add, this is great. I, you know, I think this is the first time I had the opportunity to really look through this and especially all the, all the new updates to it. So I just thank you for, for bringing this to us and all the time and effort you put into it.
Thank you.
Yeah. We're good. Kathleen?
Well, I mean, I just, yeah, very comprehensive. I am just finishing reading through it, to be honest. But to Ms. Wade's point, and, and really diving into those really important aspects like the hazing, and that, very, very important. Thank you. Thank you for all you do. You, you are an incredible asset to this district.
Thank you.
And so coming in pre-COVID, and if you feel like you've been here 10 years, I'm sure. But we're lucky to have you.
Thank you. If I may, just a quick update. We started off all season on Friday with football. Football numbers are in the low 90s, which is the highest they've been in five years. And we almost have, all together with our 10 sport offerings, almost 400 student athletes that are competing for spots on said teams. So, you know, we have rebounded pretty well from COVID, and I'm very happy that we've been able to build, you know, sustain those numbers and then continue to build on them. So.
All right. Dr. Jenkins?
Do you have a comment? I was just going to make, I was just going to make a motion to approve the revisions to the student handbook for athletics.
So we have a motion by Ms., Dr. Jenkins.
Second.
Second by Ms. Ammaral. On the motion, any discussion? I'll just add my two cents of job well done. I know it's a lot of work to re, to revitalize and revisit everything. So good job.
Thank you.
On the motion, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yep, yep. Okay. I'll do it. I gotta, yep. Next on our agenda, Mr. Shea, who requests to vote and approve revision to the student handbook, cellphone practices.
Got nervous for a second, I'm not going to lie. Not the conversation, getting this up and running. We've, we've talked already last time about our, our cellphone policy. It's not a surprise. I, I do want to, the main thing I really want to express is that we have a policy in place. We're looking at the implementation of the policy and how we can implement it. We think that cell phones have been a distraction to learning. They've been a cause of issues with relating to bullying. They've been a cause of issues relating to altercations in the school. We, this comes out of a lot of work by a lot of people that really wanted to put something in place. The major change is how we're going to implement the policy. Okay? So we have the policy. It's how are we going to implement it. So the cell hotel, which I did not think would take off as a sneaky term, has been a term now. And, but really, it's, it's, it's come from a lot of work with the teachers too, that's really saying that the first offense is a conversation with our teachers, and it's a reflective practice. It is, why, why is this such a need for you? What is the distraction? And how is this impacting your learning every day? That's a five-minute conversation. And we talked, the reason why we wanted to be a five-minute conversation is we don't want a kid to just miss a bus, be late for a sport on that first offense. You know, they might've just got distracted, grabbed their phone, especially if we're breaking old bad habits. It's the second offense where there's a longer consequence, and that's when it becomes a 30-minute teacher after session. Third offense is when it gets bumped to the AP for a referral. And fourth offense is when we're going to have parent conversation with, with the parents about the understanding of why this is such a important distraction and our concerns. And as we said in the past, there's a lot of statistics that revolve around, around cell phones and mental health, and around learning and the impact of learning. One of the big things, we know that there's not much of a difference of the old school if your cellphone is docked, which we, is turned upside down, as opposed to if it's right in front of you, it's still a distraction. It's still the first thought on students' minds. So that's why we're looking for more separate space, but again, inside the classroom for need, if needed. One side note, I don't want to be the cellphone principal. I want to be the principal that cares about mental health and concerning about our students' needs. And this is where it comes from. And this is the, the passion that I have, is that it, it is impacting our students' learning, and it is impacting their mental health. And we know this, so we should do something about it. And this is where, this is where it comes from. And I know there are exceptions. You're on a 504 plan, you're on an IEP, you have access to it, you're a student that might need to check your blood sugar. We're going to be accommodating to that. We're not a school that is not accommodating to student needs. We understand there's exceptions to rules. But what we also understand at the same time is there's a ton of statistics that we're looking at right now that are impacting our students and academically, emotionally, and across the board, and even socially. So I'll open to questions. And, and again, I'll put up the policy. So you guys have it?
Chris?
Go ahead. I guess I'll start. Thank you, Mr. Shea. I'm not going to lie that since this headlines broke of the, of this update, that I have, have had many conversations with family members, with friends, with community members about this. I think, like you said, there's, we've always had a cellphone policy. It's just the way we're, we're implementing it. And now we're post-COVID, we're trying to go back to some normalcy. We're constantly talking about mental health. I certainly, you can't dispute the, the stats that you, that you shared with us. I knew a lot of them already. But it's interesting to see it actually on paper here, all of them together. So I think this is a very reasonable rollout of this. I agree that with, one of the audience members had said that I think this is a great compromise. Some of the concerns, obviously, when the media, it got hit by the media and people were just watching the taglines, they weren't, they weren't aware of the fact that they're going to be in the classrooms, you know, they're not going to be in their locker, the students don't have to keep them locked up in their lockers. They're going to be, what if, what if there's an emergen-, I've, I've had this conversation about a half dozen times with people, folks in this town. What if there's an emergency? Well, the phones are within walking distance of the, I have no doubt that, you know, if something, if there's an actual emergency, a threat, how are they, there's, there's so many different layers to this. This is like a, a big onion with, with layers. But at the end of the day, I think this is very reasonable. You're not asking that much for, for students. And I think at the end of the day, it's going to help in a lot of ways. I, I really do, especially around the fact of keeping students focused.
Yeah. And to jump on that, like the conversation points I've had is that 95% have been positive in, in response. And even conversation with students, as much as they know that they want, they also understand, and even one of the statistics is that 60% of teens admit that their smartphone addiction is, is a serious problem, right? So they know it. They, and, and we've had good conversations about it. And again, we're just trying to help our students understand that just having it away from you while you learn is really important. When our students go to college, they're not going to have a cellphone hotel. But they're going to understand that when my cellphone wasn't in front of me and it's off to the side, it is when I am my best learner. And that's, that's what we're trying to teach our students, that sustainability of learning and how you can be that lifelong learner with the tools that we provide you. So yeah, you might not in your college class, you don't have a cellphone hotel in your college class. But you understand that if I zip it away in my backpack, it's the same approach. And we're teaching those skills and what tools we can put in our students' back pocket is essential to us.
No, I think, I think that's great. And just a couple of last things before I let you go. Just, just for the viewing public at home, and for those media outlets that may write a story on, on your presentation this evening, this is not coming from a punitive spot, right? Because that's, that's one of the pieces of this. You know, this isn't fair. We just went through COVID. This is coming from a, a spot in which you care about the students. And, and this isn't something that I, and I said this before in conversations, this isn't something that you, you just came up with on your own. You've had, you said it. You've had conversations with teachers. You've had conversations with students. So you've heard from everyone. And this is kind of what you're hearing, that it's kind of like the, the student, the, your children, right, that don't want any rules. They want you to just let them. But you, they really do want rules. So I'm, I'm all in favor of this. And just one last question. Does this also go to iPads? I was asked by a couple of students to ask you.
We're going to say no for right now because they're, if they're being used as a learning tool, some students use them for taking notes, and some students use them. Now, again, if it's going to be an individual situation where it is a distraction to that student's learning, we're going to do what's best for that student. And, and looking at it from an adult lens, saying if this is a distraction to your learning and you still need it for notes, and we're going to look at what other apps you have on, and is that suitable for the learning environment? Those are going to be individual case bases right now. We think right now, the major thing right now is getting the cell phones out of in front of it. And, and honestly, the conversation we're having too, as educators, is that these are designed for engagement. You know, there's neuroscience behind apps in, in the cellphone design. We as educators now have to fight that engagement that we're taking away. So there is a, there is a step for us that we have a little bit more of a challenge, right? We're, we're saying this thing that is designed neurologically to be engaging, we're, we're, we're putting it away, and we have to continue that engagement ourselves.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your spot.
Dr. Jenkins?
So I'll just follow up on the note-taking. We, you know, we have a lot of debate about devices and technology in, in higher ed as well. And, and the research is really sort of abundantly clear that you learn better when you take notes by hand. So I would say that perhaps we should ban iPads. If people don't have a legitimate sort of 504 or IEP for using it, you're going to learn more and better if you have to take notes because of the way your brain processes information. One of the things I will say, I'm, I'm totally in favor of this. I think this is good. But one of the things that we really debate in higher ed about device policies is when you have device policies and students have in their 504 or their IEP that they get to use devices, it ends up outing people as having sort of learning disabilities that sometimes they may not feel comfortable with. And so it's just, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer about this. But I think, I would just encourage us to be really thoughtful about how we do that for those kiddos that have that, who now are essentially, when, you know, their friends are going to say, well, why do you get to have a phone? And it's like, well, you know, I have. So I think, I just would encourage us to be thoughtful about it. I think it's a great policy. I have no problems with it. But how we sort of manage the comfort level of kids who may have an educational need for this in the classroom is something we need to think about.
And absolutely. And my background is special education, so I'm always trying to be cognizant of that. And I think if you even asked me five years ago, I'd be like, every kid should have a cellphone on them, and they should be doing their schedules on it, and they should be, and that was a special ed teacher in me. And so it is a constant conversation of what is best. And I don't want to out a student for a disability and, and support them. And I think there's different reasons, different ways, and I hope that, that we can manage that ourselves too. And we have a really strong special ed staff that really works with confidentiality and privacy. So we're lucky we have that foundation.
Ms. Ammaral?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I was going to make that exact point, Shannon. Yeah, I, I just, you know, thank you. Welcome to Principal Good channel, whatever you're watching. Yeah, just, you know, the community is going to, you know, come up to speed and process this at their own, you know. I, I've heard from parents as well, and I've spoken to many. And many, or most of the parents that I've spoken to had that concern related to the individual needs of their, of their child. And had, you know, I have a, a child that requires a device for communication. But it certainly is like, you know, being cognizant of what that means for. but it certainly is like, you know, being cognizant of what that means for him. I mean, he's not here, but there are ways in which, sort of a guided access to restrict kind of leaping over to YouTube or other apps when they're using it for the, but in, to Shannon's point, I was gonna bring that out, so just being aware of that is really important. And just for the parents out there to know what you said, that if there are exceptions to the rule, I always, I always check in with my brother, who's just retired from education, a history teacher in another state, and I just say, well, how do you feel about this? Because I was processing it, too, you know. I talked last time about the app with the GPS, you know, I'm GPSing where my son is and if he's gone, and, you know, prior to us utilizing that for where our children are on the bus. And he said, well, that's just, it's been, you know, a local community to us, it's been the reality, it's been the rule, so it wasn't something, he said, we've been doing that for years. We haven't allowed, you know, I don't know if they coined it "cell hotel," but, so I thought, oh, okay. So, that was my barometer in terms of this. But, yeah, just knowing that those students who might need it for that reason, a medical reason, or an educational reason, that's different from what you're saying and it's coming from a place of, this is gonna become just part of what our incoming freshmen are gonna get used to, and it's just gonna become part of the culture and the expectation within your school. And so, just, you know, thank you, I'm in support of it. And I look forward to, you know, seeing some good results that Mary alluded to and she'll probably speak to now in terms of other things, you know, more global kind of concerns within this school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and again, like, you know, thanks for the setup. You know, what I would say, again, I look at this from my classroom teacher lens, you know, and having taught high school, is, you know, I can't, I mean, you know, it drives me crazy with my own kids, I'm like, put your phone away, put, oh, just two more minutes, two more minutes. And I can't imagine doing that with an entire class of 20 kids every single block, and that is a reality, whereas, you know, if they come in and it's part of the habit and, you know, really, it's one of the things that's one of the reasons that classroom teachers spend so much time in this first week going over rules, because when you establish them in the beginning, they're so much easier to maintain. And then later, you know, maybe you can soften up, but not on this, but, you know, but again, you need to establish those procedures and it becomes unthinking. And I know that, you know, as we read through, again, we had all sorts of different comments with parents who were, you know, how is my child gonna find their individual phone? And I kept thinking of, like, my days visiting D'Amello, where every single kid was able to find their cubby without a problem and go back five times a day. I guarantee these children will be able, and the students will be able to find their phone in their, you know, I'm thinking of a shoe bag or whatever the hotel looks like. So, I think we, you know, we also have to see that, and this is something, having just actually come back from dropping a child off at college, the dean spoke to us about, you know, the negative aspects of cellphone use, and one of the things that he pointed to was, you know, we use it as a social crutch, and these kids are nervous, and so they don't tend to talk to their neighbor as they used to before, because, again, now they have this, you know, this, something to escape, which you say is very engaging. So, you know, there's a whole other, like, piece to it, and it's not just the students who wanna use the phone, it's the other students who are sitting there who wanna maybe engage with their neighbor, but that kid's on the phone. So, again, a whole host of things, so I'm clearly very supportive. I think it's going to alleviate a lot of tensions for the staff, especially how this is a uniform policy, it's, you know, it's, because I know some teachers had this policy in place before, so I think it's just gonna be, it's a really good thing and hopefully it helps a lot.
Appreciate it, thank you.
I know, and I'm gonna agree with my colleagues here, I think this is fantastic and, you know, put, this basically puts a little bit of, you know, as you're looking at the old versus new and the expectations and such, it puts, you know, like any policy, puts some teeth into it. It was funny, over the weekend, I had dinner with a couple of cousins who are retired teachers, and the first words, you know, from them when I saw them was, make sure you vote yes. I says, oh, yeah, don't, you know, that's where I'm headed with this type of deal, but in all seriousness, this is a great tool to start with. My thanks to you, to the teachers who gave up, you know, their Tuesdays, they were coming in and working on all kinds of different situations and things of that nature, as you and I talked about. So, you know, my thanks to them to get this off the ground. So, it will work. We always gotta, you know, I got along without a cellphone when I was in high school, so it's as simple as, you know, be home when the streetlights come on, et cetera, et cetera, so they'll survive.
Yeah, I think it's really nice that we have a merge worlds and people that we have, our students' generation are like tech bilingual, they've grown up with technology their whole life, where, you know, for me, it came into my life, so that I had to learn how to do it. And so, we have our tech natives, we have the tech bilingual, and then we have the other generations of people that are still learning and adapting to it. And it's just really nice that I have the support and I appreciate it, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Dr. Jenkins?
I'll make a motion to approve revisions to the student handbook cellphone practices. A second.
Motion by Dr. Jenkins, a second by Ms. Wade, to approve the Dartmouth High School updated cellphone policy. On the motion, any discussion? Again, thank you for everything.
Thank you, everyone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, everyone. I just wanna say two things. I really appreciate all of your support. You guys have been really kind through all of this, so I'm very grateful. Just two quick shout-outs, Andy's Handbook has put so much work into it, it's really nice, it's really nice to have that. And I know we think the maintenance staff, our custodial staff has been in here with summer school, ESY, with Academy, and they've worked really hard around that, too. So, we have an amazing faculty and staff in this community, and we're lucky to have everyone, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Ryan.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
To Dr. Gifford. In regards to the cellphone policy at the high school, do we have, what's in place is far as protocols, procedures at the middle school. I'm just curious, as our students are coming up through the grade levels.
I can speak to that, because Mike did the research. So, Mike, if I'm wrong, just quote me if I'm wrong, but their policy is it stays in the lockers.
Yep.
And stays in the locker.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
I was just gonna say that, I've got an East Creed grandson, and that's where it is.
It's in the locker. It's just, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Not at all. I don't know, never mind, shut up. I'm gonna say something, but it was not. Okay, next on our agenda is a discussion to consider sending committee members to the National School Board Association and SBA Annual Conference.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just be brief about this. This has come up, I know we all get those emails, but one of the things that is really helpful to me over the past nine years of being on the committee is attending conferences, the MAS C conference with the Mass every November. And having these types of professional, really professional development for school committees is very useful. And just meeting with colleagues from across our state, you know, I learn a lot from what's going on in other districts in Massachusetts. And in speaking with some of my school committee colleagues in other districts, that they have delegates that they send every year to the National School Board meeting, and it's at a different location every year. I was actually, I got a couple of emails about submitting a proposal, and I actually thought about, it's too late now, but I thought about submitting a proposal, and so, it's like, you know what, let me bring this up for the board to consider whether or not we wanna put a policy in place that basically the committee has to vote every year to agree to send, you know, what the reason is. So, we're just not turning a blind eye to, hey, I just wanna, you know, I just wanna go on a conference. So, I think there's a lot of value in it, and I think it would be helpful for us to, as a committee, to grow and be able to, you know, continue to improve the Dartmouth school system by listening and sharing with colleagues across the country as to what's going on in other districts. So, just, I just wanted to bring it up for consideration.
No, I mean, I got the same email, and it was like, I don't know, August 3rd for a deadline to submit, and it's like, we're not meeting till the 22nd, so this doesn't work. And then I saw yours, which was great. I think what we would need to do, and I agree, is, you know, and this could very well be the policy subcommittee, is the fact that we would need a policy for out-of-state travel type, or, you know, or school committee travel, however you wish to put it together type of deal, is to, you know, how many, well, you could only send maximum two, anyway, and such, you know, where they, and what we would expect them to bring, you know, the committee member to bring back to us.
Exactly.
That type of deal. That's my two cents on it.
No, I, I would agree.
Dr. Jenkins?
So, I think it's a great idea. You know, my stepfather used to be on a school board in Illinois, and he would go to this every year. They took the whole committee, because they found it really valuable, and I was always a little jealous. I don't think I could maybe personally fit it in, but I do think it's good to regularly send people there and to learn about some, you know, sort of national trends. And maybe we might consider, you know, there's a sort of a way to offer where maybe like the chairs, the first, the chair and the vice chair are the first offered. Because we traditionally rotate, that would mean that who gets to go rotates, and that would just make it easier that we say the chair and the vice chair are, like, given first dibs and then it can go to the rest of the committee. But I think it's a great idea, because I do think there's a lot to be said for professional development.
I think there's a lot to learn out there. No doubt about it.
Yeah, I agree.
Kathleen, Mary?
Yeah, I'm just in agreement.
Yeah, okay. So, probably put that on the, put on, for the policy subcommittee to take a look at it, you know?
Yeah, and don't forget, in November is the Mass Mass Conference, which
I'll be attending. So, if you could register.
So, if anyone wants to go, Kate, no, and it's, um, November 2nd through the 5th this year, it's, obviously, it's always in Hyannis, but you can take care of the registrations and so, you can go online and look at the agenda and whatnot, but, yeah.
I find it really useful, and Dr. Gifford and I go to a lot of classes together, or a few, anyway, and
There'll be a lot of good stuff.
Kinda learn a lot.
So, you don't have to go every day, you can choose a couple, whatever you want. Take a look at it.
I'll go take a look, thank you. All right. Okay, so, we're good with that? All right. All right. Next on the agenda is our, we've gotten our proposed committee meeting dates for October through December. We already have our two meetings in September scheduled, September 12th and the 26th, and then we're looking at Monday, October 17th, Monday, November 7th, Monday, November 21st, and then Monday, December 12th type of deal. Dr.?
I just expect cupcakes or cake in
I'm sorry?
I just expect cupcakes or cake in October, because that's my birthday.
It's your birthday.
So, this will be my birthday party, so to speak, so, no, the dates are all fine with me, I'm just kidding.
Okay. Yeah, I like that, that's fine.
Put a little star there, so.
But I'm assuming we can bring them, we can't eat them here because of still being the COVID rules and everything, so.
No, we can eat now.
Oh, we can eat now? Okay, that's fine. All right, is this, are these good, dates good with everybody?
Good with me.
Okay. Booty full. So it is said, so it is written. All right, that takes care of that. Superintendent's update, Dr. Gifford.
All right, couple of updates. As a reminder, that Cook Center, I bring it up all of the time, that we've partnered with, the next Zoom webinar, if you will, is August 23rd, so there should be a flyer, it's at 6 o'clock on our website, our Facebook page, but we'll make sure that's bumped up to the top again, but that's tomorrow, right?
Yep.
Tomorrow. So, they do have, only, I think, 11 folks have signed up for that so far, and we would certainly encourage more people to Zoom in with that. It's all free. Project Time, as I mentioned before, is today and tomorrow, and we had a full house all day, and various folks presented and gave them all kinds of Dartmouth ways of doing things, and our two directors were here as well and talking about what's happening in Dartmouth and what's the next steps we're taking relative to strategic planning, high quality instruction, et cetera. And the last thing I just wanna mention is, as Mr. Shea mentioned, we did have the Acceleration Academy last week, and that was over, I think, over 120 students were here, and I came one day as they were exiting the building, and it was like people running around, picking everyone up, little kids running, grandparents, and I think you had come by and the band was here. The last couple of days has obviously been very busy, so, including today, everyone was here. So, it was another successful Acceleration Academy, so that's all.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for the superintendent on this?
Just a quick question, Dr. Gifford. As far as, is my understanding that, just for everyone watching and those in the audience, there is moving forward DUCY in the state of Massachusetts, there really is no more COVID guidance, there's, if you could just
Correct. Yep, you're absolutely right. The latest guidance is there is no guidance.
There is, right, there's pretty much no guidance.
We're back to normal, pretty much. The only thing that remains in place is masking in the nurses' office.
Nurses' office.
So, we do encourage parents to always send, we'll have them, but a mask with their students in a backpack, just in case, so that's required by law, that's it.
I hate to say it, but are we back to normal?
We're back to normal, and I think it's a good idea, though, what you speak about, because there is still some recommendations about isolation and those kinds of things, but we will not be doing any testing, nothing like that, so. And I know our nurses are meeting with Ms. Jodwin, who supervises the nurses along with the Board of Health, I think it's this week, just to touch base and move forward, so.
All right. Super. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay.
Couple of things I have, Dr. Gifford mentioned it a little bit, but can tell school is getting ready to start. I was here this morning, I went by the football stadium and the lights were on, the students, the students were practicing. I was here at noon time and I would've thought school was in session between the morning, the athletics finishing, the band coming in, the, you know, meetings going on with teachers, the project time and everything else, so it was just absolutely great, great to see. One of the things is the superintendent's evaluation, do we wanna put this as a discussion topic on the September agenda so that we can get it finished by the end of September, begin of October? Does that work for everybody? Perfect.
Do you want the 12th or the 26th?
Either one.
Because you would have to have it prepared for the
Well, no, 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 we wanna talk about it on the 12th and then we'll go after that.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you. Just happened to wrote that down because I thought of it when we were talking. And the last thing I want to, and this is a personal, and I think we both got, we all got them, but got an email that was unsigned. Somebody sent us an email that was unsigned about something type of deal. I just want everyone out there to know that if you send me personally a letter, a text, an email that's not signed, I'm gonna let you know I'm not gonna read it. Okay? Very plain, very simple, you know, please sign it, so at least I know who I'm talking to or corresponding with, or something of that nature. So, if you're gonna send me an email or a letter or something of that nature, please sign it. Other than that, if it's a letter, I'm just gonna put on, I'm gonna just staple it back shut with a note on the cover of the envelope that says, "Not signed, not read." The email will go into a folder, but it's not gonna get read, it'll be one of those unread type of deals, so that's my only request. Anybody else have anything? No? All right. As we just talked about, our next meeting is
12th.
The September 12th, we'll have our, we'll have our new staff here, so I'm assuming that will be, like, at 6 o'clock, when we normally have a little reception for them type of deal, and at 6 o'clock, and then the meeting will be at, there we go, and our meeting will be at 6:30 here at the high school, we'll go back to our regular times, all right? And with that, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
It's moved.
Moved by Mr. Oliver, second by Ms. Wade. On the motion, any discussion? Chair hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good week and good luck with school opening.
So exciting.
Yeah. Good.[1768.53]